Good evening, folks. Welcome to the public hearing, Save Loads Only Board Appeals Public Meeting, November 14th. Just a few reminders and protocols and procedures. If you're speaking tonight on petition, please come to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. And again, just a reminder, only one person can speak at a time. You have to be at the lectern. There's no back and forth conversation here. This meeting is also held via Zoom and telephone as well by contacting DPD ahead of time. We're going to continue business. We have none under new business. We have a petition, a variance, the applicant is Global Realty Network, property located at 685 Chumpsford Street. Global Realty Network has supplied to the loads on appeal seeking to add a new unit to an existing two-family at 685 Chumpsford Street. The subject property is located in a traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district. The project requires variance approval per section 5.1 for minimum lot area per dwelling unit under section 6.1 for maximum curb cut and for any other relief required on loads on ordinance. Good evening, councilor.
Good evening. Attorney Katherine Flood here on behalf of Global Realty Network, here for approval to add an additional unit to an existing two-family home at 685 Chumpsford Street. The subject property is in a TMU zoning district. The applicant is requesting a variance approval pursuant to section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, variance approval pursuant to section 6.1.10 for maximum curb cut, and a variance pursuant to 6.1.4 for required parking. We appeared before the planning board and obtained a special permit approval to convert the existing structure from a two-unit to a three-unit structure. The planning board conditioned the approval on the removal of the two parking spaces that were originally submitted, as shown on the initial site plan, that were on Chumpsford Street, and the addition of one parking space at the rear of the property. We filed revised plans based on that approval, so the plans before you tonight should show no parking on Chumpsford Street, but five parking spaces off of Norcross Street in the rear of the property. The property currently consists of approximately 6,024 square feet of land with approximately 3,649 square feet of living space. The structure appears to be a three-family but has been used as a two-family. The structure as it looks, looks as it would be a three-family. The property consists of one unit per floor. There is no expansion of the exterior of the structure except the dormer on the third floor of the property. The neighborhood consists of commercial, single, and multifamily property. We had originally petitioned for a variance for maximum curb cut because we were going to have two curb cuts, one on Chumpsford Street and one on Norcross Street. Based on the feedback from the planning board, we no longer need the curb cut on Chumpsford Street, but we still do need the variance because the original curb cut on Norcross Street was 25 feet, now it's 29. Also, as you can see, we no longer have the required six parking spaces based on the comments from the planning board. We have five, so we do need a variance for that. Due to the location and the shape of the lot, as opposed to other lots in the neighborhood, the applicant has a hardship to support this request for a variance. The release sought by the applicant can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. We have submitted architectural plans in the revised site plan. The renovation will enhance the neighborhood. Also, at the planning board, we submitted a lot of support, letters of support, which should be in the packet. I also sent pictures of what the property looked like and what it looks like now with all the improvements that have been made by the applicant. I'm going to let Matt take over and go over the site plan to show you what changes have been made and what we're requesting.
Thank you, councilor. Good evening, Mr. Hammer.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals. For the record, Matt Hammer, Lamplex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. So here's Chumpsford Street, here's Newell Street, and here's Norcross Street. The property is here. It's a 6,024-square-foot property with an existing building here, two and a half stories, recently has a dormer on the half-story to provide more living space availability on that, I guess you would call it the third story or the half-story. And off of Norcross, we have four parking spaces existing. There's some concrete strips with grass on the other side, which is interesting in terms of, you know, a parking area, but we're going to leave that existing scenario the way that it is with the two spaces here and the two spaces in the garage. Originally, we had proposed a curb cut that was located in this proximity here. After some, a lot of discussion with the planning board, they felt as though it would be better to not have a curb cut off of Chumpsford Street due to the, you know, the traffic out in Chumpsford Street, as well as backing out onto Chumpsford Street, and had advised us to put a space here. So what we've done is added one space here, and that space here would require a variance to the maximum curb cut, which is 24 feet, and this curb cut now would be 29 feet. That curb cut would not impede the sidewalk in any way. It would be, the sidewalk would be at the same level going across. And then they felt as though, because there's not as much pedestrian activity on Norcross, it was better to leave the sidewalk existing off of Chumpsford Street. There was also a shade tree here, so we moved the shade tree over to this location here. I should note that there's an existing 24-inch pine tree, which is right here, that is going to remain. And then I can answer any questions or turn it back over to Attorney Flood.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. If you have no further comments about your project, we'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing that portion of public hearings close, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing that the public hearings close, we're going to open question, comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have many questions. I think it's a fairly sizable and good project, and it does fall within the guidelines of the rest of the neighborhood, and I don't think that the curb cut is of any major consequence. I do have a question, Attorney Flood. You mentioned that the parking will be in the back, right?
The back, there's five parking spaces in the back of the building, in the garage area.
Okay, so the garage is a two-door garage?
Yes.
And that's two plus?
Three in front of it.
The, okay.
We originally, when we originally submitted our first plan, we had four spaces in the back and two spaces on Chumpsford Street. The planning board did not think that the spaces on Chumpsford Street were a good idea, so they said to just have one additional spot in the back.
Okay.
So when we originally applied, we didn't need a variance for parking. We had adequate parking.
Got it, got it, yeah. It makes sense. I just want to be sure if there was additional, because I didn't go, when I visited the property, I didn't go behind the garage. I don't know if there was anything additional space back there.
No, there's just two spaces in the garage and then three in the front.
Okay, okay. I would leave it to the rest of the board members if they have any additional questions, but I think that this is fairly standard. I know the transportation engineer had made some comments, but I think based on what you're saying, that's outdated.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
My only questions were, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only questions were with respect to the comments from the transportation engineer, but thankfully you've taken the advice of the planning board. Good move, and I think you've come up with a plan that works best for everyone involved. I'll be supporting the petition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad to see we're adding more housing in the city, and I think that this is a good location to do that. I think that the idea of minimizing the parking on the site that also maximizes the green space is a good idea. So we'll have five spaces, but we'll still have the ability to park on Norcross Street especially, and I believe we'll have room for two spaces, recognizing that 20 feet from the curb isn't allowed from Chumpsford Street, so that's seven spaces really. Even during snow emergencies, we're still allowed to park on Norcross Street, I believe, I would like to ask about the shade tree and how it got relocated and if it needs to be relocated. If you could just tell me why we, did we relocate it for the proposed parking on Chumpsford Street? And if that's not there, can it be located closer to provide shade on Chumpsford Street, which is solely needed in that area?
That's a good question. What we wanted to do was actually move it back from the intersection so that wasn't any interference with site distance from people coming down Norcross and looking down Chumpsford to oncoming vehicles. So we thought it was better to move it back.
Could we accommodate both?
Oh, to put another shade tree here.
Exactly. And then provide shade on Chumpsford Street, which is solely needed because?
Do you want to just move this over to shade?
Exactly.
Yeah, we can do that.
In a manner that still recognizes that we don't want to prune it to a crazy level because of the power lines, so just kind of work with where would be the best spot to provide shade to.
Sure.
What kind of tree are you proposing? Do you have a species?
Well, it's really up to DPD. It's going to be a two-inch caliber tree, and they have a list of trees that they can advise on, so we'll usually leave it up to the developer and DPD to.
Okay, great.
For the species.
I'm glad to see as much green space being preserved here, and I think the ask of increasing the curb cut to 29 from 25 is a minor one. Would we be, so you are keeping that pine tree, which, there's a couple of photos that show before and after, and in that photo it shows it not being retained, and I thought that was because of the parking space.
No, it actually can stay.
Okay.
I have some photos of it, if you want to see it.
It's not on the site plan as staying, though, right? The new site plan that we have doesn't?
The original site plan didn't show it.
Okay, do, I don't think we have that in our package, the new site plan, so maybe we could just, as a condition to update the site plan, to show the pine tree staying on Norcross.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
All right, so we'll just have that as a condition to update the site plan to show the?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Hammer.
Okay, and then the other condition is to relocate the shade tree to provide the maximum amount of shade to Chumpsford Street?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through, Mr. Chairman. Yep, I don't see any real issues with this as far as, I'm glad that pine tree is staying there and not being moved, which is good. I was kind of, when I first looked at it, I was kind of worried that that would have to go, but it's good that it's staying. The one thing, we will have to get a new site plan because the one thing I did point out, it looks like the site plan we have has, I don't know if it was meant to be the existing pine tree or a new pine tree, but it's encroaching on the, it's encroaching on the house itself, but I just recognize that to Mr. Hammer, he's aware of it, so just make sure that we get the new up.
I don't believe the pine tree is still there. The pine tree that was existing, I'm sorry, I believe has been removed.
The tree, the pine tree?
Yes. If you look at the photographs that I submitted, the pine tree is not there.
Okay. All right.
And these photographs are from October, so that pine tree was removed, and I believe the pine tree had to be removed.
Oh, okay.
Because we are putting parking in that area, so I don't want to make that a condition because it doesn't exist.
Okay, I think we, I think, I think where the confusion was lying, counsel, I think we were thinking that the photos you provided were before, were before, what's a before and after, not a before and today. Like, the pine tree's there before, this is where it is now, and then after, once everything's all said and done.
No.
I think that's what, I think that's where the confusion was lying with regards to the photos.
Oh, I apologize. No, this was before they started cleaning it up and making it look nice, and this is what it looks like now.
Okay, all right.
The picture was taken in October 2024.
Okay, well, the pine tree is gone, there's nothing. Okay, no, that's our, that's on, I guess that's on our.
Sorry, I apologize.
On my part, I don't know about if any of my other fellow board members thought the same.
I thought so, too. The before and after.
Okay, thought it was a before and after, not a before and today, so.
No.
Okay, well, the pine tree's gone anyways, but it's regardless, I know, I believe Mr. Hammer mentioned that he did update the plan. We need to get that updated plan because the ones that we have submitted have the pine tree sitting there, but it's encroaching, it's literally right in the house. Half of it's in the house, the existing dwelling, and the other half is not, so we would need the new site plan regardless, just to make sure that that's eliminated from that. But other than that, yeah, this, I don't see any issues with this. And the garage is staying?
Yes, garage is staying.
All right, no further questions. I would be in approval, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no questions right now, thank you, though.
Thank you. Counselor, I think this is a very nice project. I think it's always good, like my colleague said, to add kind of a new housing unit in the city, and the relief you're seeking, the curb cut, you know, five feet or something, it's very minimal, and I think in terms of relief for parking, it's, to me, I think it's doable with the request that you're asking for. And then you're okay with the conditions that we talked about, the updated site plan and the relocation of the shade tree, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If there's no further comments from my colleagues, can we, oh, Mr. McCarthy, go ahead, sir.
I would just like to ask if we can condition a second shade tree then in lieu of the pine tree, and maybe in the location where you show it on your revised site plan, that we have a second shade tree located where that revised site plan shows what might have been a pine tree?
Yeah, the woods.
Good point.
Yes, sometime between the survey and today, the tree was removed, so if that's not a problem, we can most certainly add the second.
Shade tree.
Shade tree, yes.
Perfect.
We can work with the planning department to figure out where, what type of tree and where we should put it.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank, thank you so much.
Would this be one, I mean, Peter, would this be one that qualifies with that, whatever that program is regarding, I mean, maybe that's something that they can look into?
I'm pretty sure that the entire city falls within the program now, so.
Okay, so, yeah, good.
Thank you, Mr. Karambas. All right, if there's no further comments, can we have a motion by my colleagues, please?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-50 for variances at 685 Chumpsford Street, for a variance for minimum lottery per dwelling unit, for maximum curb cut, and for reduced parking to five spaces, with the condition that the applicant provide two shade trees, one on Chumpsford Street and one on Norcross Street.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
And the updated site plan, removing that tree on the, in the house.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Second by George.
Second by Mr. Prokop. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approved with conditions.
And member Nickerson.
Approval.
All right, you've been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Best of luck with your project. All right, going on to the next item on our agenda, under new business, we have ZBA-2024-53. The petition type is a variance, applicant is Martin Burke, property located at 4 Tammerack Street. The applicant has applied to the Low Zone Board of Appeals to construct a new single-family home at 4 Tammerack Street. The property is in the traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district, and requires variance approval under section 5.1 for maximum front yard setback and for any other relief required in the Low Zone Ordinance. Good evening, councilor.
Good evening, Chairman Peck, members of the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals, John Cox, 375 Gorm Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. I represent Martin Burke, who's here this evening. He is the owner of, he's Melma Properties LLC, the owner of 4 Tammerack Street in Lowell, which is a 7,087-square-foot vacant lot at the, currently, and we are requesting a variance. What we'd like to do is extend Tammerack Street about 140 feet and build a single-family home there. Maybe I'll just give you a little history on this thing first. It's been around for a bit, not before this board, but other boards. In September of 2020, we went before the Conservation Commission, basically the same plan, and it was approved. Right after that, DEP, which I had never heard of before, stepped in and appealed it on their own, and after almost a full year, almost a full year, back and forth with the engineering and DEP, we, Mr. Burke and the engineering firm agreed to, basically, I think, agreed to what DEP kind of requested. In the spring of this past year, the, we came back before the Conservation Commission, and it was then denied. And then Mr. Burke appealed it back to DEP, and then they issued a superseding order. So conservation has been resolved after a long stretch, and on, we were before, on September 5th, we were before the planning board here for this plan for definitive subdivision approval, which was granted unanimously by the board. So Mr. Burke wants to build a single-family home there on Tammerack Street, which is a dead end, pretty much is a dead end. Again, we'll extend Tammerack Street 140 feet and build a single-family home there. The reason we need a variance this evening from the maximum, maximum front yard setback is per the fire department. When, when we were putting this together, before we went to the, after the planning board, actually, the fire department got involved, and we met with them, and they needed the turnaround for their trucks, and so that's why the house was pushed, was pushed back some 42 feet from the street. So it works, you know, it works for them, as you can tell from the DPD memorandum dated November 12th of this year. It's a very strong memorandum in support. If I may, I'd like to read, I'm sure you guys have it in front of you, but on number, you know, two, they talk about the planning board, number three, they talk about conservation, and number four, where it says the project review staff does not have any concerns about this proposal. And again, talks about the front yard setback necessary to accommodate the fire department. When you look through the design plan or comments, the proposal is appropriately designed within the context of the neighborhood. The setback will not detract from the local architectural vernacular and will improve vehicular circulation. As far as working with the next paragraph, working with DPD to pertain to green gardens, we have, would be happy to do that, clearly. It also says residents will benefit from less than a five-minute walk to Hadley, which is a schedule for playground upgrade in 2025. The engineering comments, we have absolutely no problem with. Instead of, and the first one is kind of interesting because it says, as you can see, instead of installing cleanout on Tammerack Street, install a sewer manhole at the location where the line from the houses connect. That was our original idea. We actually had the manhole there originally, and then wastewater didn't like it and wanted us to move it, so that's going to be an issue we're going to figure out as we go forward with engineering and wastewater and the water department, wastewater department, but we'll get, it'll get resolved, but that's where that confusion may come from. Adding the word "street" to the snow signs, snow storage signs is no problem. As you can see, the fire department comments, they pre-approved this with the emergency vehicle turnaround. And then the wastewater comments, we have obviously no problem with either one of those. So all these comments from the various city departments are either very positive or ones that we obviously are happy to implement. The, I think there's a lot of benefits to this proposal, additional new home in the city. We're going to replace a one-inch water line with a four-inch water line. We're going to install upgraded sewerage on Tammerack. Obviously, additional tax revenue to the city, vacant lot, now we're going to have a single-family home there, a brand-new single-family home. We're going to install a new fire hydrant on Tammerack, as shown on the plan. We're going to plant three new shade trees, and they're going to be red maples, because that's what the neighbors wanted, or the neighbor that Mr. Burke had spoken with. Again, it's an underutilized piece of land, we have two parking spaces on the, on the property, and I want to introduce, Ian is here. Ian is from Meizmer and Brem, the engineer on the project, and happy to answer any questions if any gentleman may have any.
Thank you so much, counsel, for that summary of the project.
Thank you.
If you have no further comments, we're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing then that portion of public hearings close, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing then, on the public hearings close, we're going to open question, the comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Attorney Cox stated, the sole reason for being here tonight was the, was the front yard setback, which was a request from the fire department, which has been accommodated, and the fire department has signed off on it, so petitions won my support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the applicant for their patience to get through this long process. And I'm glad we're here tonight with a very doable plan that provides a lot of benefit, not only to increase the housing stock in the city, shade trees, and reasonable drainage system for the site. So I think we have a very doable plan and a very minimal ask, and an ask that's kind of pushed by our own departments to require the variance. So I am grateful for the patience, again, of the applicant to see through the process, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, through, Mr. Chairman. I share my same sentiments as my fellow board members, and this totally makes sense based on the fact that the fire department's actually asking that to be done for their, for the safety, for their purposes and for the safety of whoever the residents are of that area, so I will be fully in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think all your efforts for the last four years obviously paid off because you've worked diligently with the departments to, you know, have some, you know, work, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would be voting in favor of this. I also would be voting in favor of this. I think the plan, you know, looks, you know, very doable, and of course, it would sit pretty well on top of a vacant piece of property that probably needs some sprucing up, so I'll be, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Like my colleague said, I think this is a very, fits in well with the neighborhood. Again, this is just a, there's nothing there, so I think this is a good addition. Again, housing stock to the city. Yeah, and again, the only real relief you're seeking is the ones, like my colleague said, it's being issued by the fire department. So I think, thank you to you and Mr. Burke, I think you showed a lot of restraint, you know, you probably could have asked for something more grander and, you know, but this fits in well with that neighborhood, I think, as well. So I'd be supporting as well. Any comments from my colleagues before we move forward with a motion and a vote? Seeing then, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2024-53 for variance at 410 Rock Street, and the variance is for the maximum front yard setback.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. Can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
You've been approved. Wish best of luck, Counselor.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. I want to thank Peter and all the guys he works with and women at his office. They're great, you know, on every project, they're very helpful and very, very, very helpful, so I just want to thank them.
Thank you for the kind words.
Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good night, thank you, folks. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, under new business, we have ZBA-2024-54. The petition type is a variance. The applicant is Nicholas Cosambolos, property located at 34 Staple Street. The applicant has applied to the Lowell zoning board of appeals to construct an addition onto the existing single-family home at 34 Staple Street. The subject property is located in the suburban single-family SSF zoning district. The project requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the side yard setback requirements, per section 6.1 for the relief from the driveway setback requirements, and for any relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing Nick Cosambolos. Nick is the owner of 34 Staple Street. Nick has lived in this property for about 30 years. He's been a resident of the Highlands his entire life. His business, Captain Johns, which you are probably all familiar with, I certainly am, is located in Couples Square. Nick had hoped to be here tonight, but he's had some health challenges lately, and he just simply couldn't get here. He called me on my way into the building and said he couldn't make it. In any event, we have provided the board with the site plan, the design set, which includes the floor plans, the elevations, and the rendering of the proposed addition. We're before you, as the chairman mentioned, seeking variances pursuant to section 5.1 for a side yard setback and pursuant to 6.1 for a driveway setback from the structure. Nick is proposing to construct a 15 by 23 addition to the south side of the lot, the driveway side, in order to house the primary suite for the property. Nick has, as I said, because of his mobility issues, he has difficulty getting to his second floor now, and the idea is to construct this 23 by 15 by 23 addition, which will be the primary suite. 34 Staple Street is an existing single-family home. It has a detached garage to the back of the driveway. It sits on 10,914 square feet of land in the suburban, single-family zoning district. The design of the home was done in a way that it would fit the character of the existing home and, of course, the character of the neighborhood. Nick has had the opportunity to speak to most of his immediate abutters, and all of the immediate abutters that he has spoken to are in favor of what he is proposing, and in fact, I have submitted a letter of support with, I think, four signatures, all immediate abutters that have no issue with what he is proposing tonight. The staff comments were supportive of the application. There is a note from the engineering department indicating that if the intent is to resurface the driveway, he'll need a permit for that. The driveway was recently resurfaced, so that's really not in play. But the application is pretty straightforward. I believe the request is minimal, and we're here tonight seeking approval this evening. But I'm here, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Counselor, for that summary of your project. We're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing then that portion of public hearings close. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor? In favor? Seeing then, on the public hearings close, we're going to open question the comments to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, your floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to understand the variances that you're asking for here, if we could. The variance for side yard setback, that relief is largely because of the existing condition, where the side yard setback is less than 10 feet on the north side.
Yeah, that's right. Six feet. Six feet.
So the addition isn't creating a hardship on the setback, it's the existing house that currently exists.
Right.
So that variance is being granted, but it has nothing to do with the addition, other than the fact that we're going for an addition.
We're expanding, right.
Right. And so the only real variance that is applicable to the actual addition is the three-foot requirement that you'd have from the addition itself to the driveway.
Exactly.
And that is, I think, a reasonable ask because we'd be keeping the existing pavement versus redoing the whole driveway, creating more waste, and not necessarily gaining a lot of benefit by doing that.
Right.
So I think it's a minimal ask, for sure, and I love the fact that we are supporting somebody to age and place, somebody that's been Highland resident, someone who's a business owner that's provided a lot to the city, a lot of benefit, for sure, and a minimal ask, so I absolutely can support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Member McCarthy, basically took all the words out of my mouth, like I was saying the same thing, so. And I'm sorry, Mr. Cosambolos was not able to appear today, but I wish him well, I hope he gets better, and this is, yeah, minimal relief being requested, and it'll be, neighbors, we have to get support from the neighbors, and I don't see any issues with this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to agree with Mr. Callahan and Mr. McCarthy on this, so yeah, I'd be in favor as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow members. I think this is, it's not an issue. I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. Chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. DPD staff had no concerns, and neither do I. I'll be voting in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. I don't have any concerns either, and again, to my colleague's point, this is a minimal request, and then all the neighbors and the abutters were in support. I think if there were people in opposition, it'd be a different story, but I think, again, it would fit in well, and then, like Mr. McCarthy said, I think it's good when the people who live there can just kind of adjust the environment around them to fit their needs. And again, great businessman, you know, I've been to his place more frequently than I like to admit, but, so, I'd be supporting as well.
Thank you.
Any further comments by my colleagues before we move forward with a motion? Seeing then, can we motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2024-54 for variance at 34 Staple Street. The relief sought is a side yard setback, or variance for side yard setback, and relief for driveway setback.
All right, motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second by the vice chairman, Mr. Callahan, can we roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Prokop.
Approve.
Member Nickerson.
Approve.
All right, you've been approved. Wish best of luck.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you, Counselor, have a good evening. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have ZBA-2024-51. The petition is a variance, applicant is 118 Agawam LLC, property located at 440 Central Street. The applicant has applied to his own board of appeals to split the existing lot at 440 Central Street into two lots. Lot A contains a two-family building, and Lot B contains a single-family building. The applicant does not propose to add units to the property. The subject property is located in the traditional mixed-use TMU zoning district. Lot A requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the maximum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, and minimum side yard setback requirements, and for any relief required under the Lowell zoning ordinance. Lot B requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the minimum lot area per dwelling, lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, maximum front yard setbacks, and minimum side yard setback requirements, and for any relief required in the Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, again, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, 118 Agawam LLC, and with us tonight, we have Hector Rodriguez and his wife, Malagros Hernandez. Hector and Malagros are the principals of 118 Agawam LLC. Hector and Malagros own quite a bit of real estate in the city. They're sort of trending their real estate holdings more to multifamily than to two- and three-unit families, but all of their investment properties are within the city limits, and they have actually moved to the city as well. But as the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight requesting relief pursuant to section 5.1 and section 6.1 of the city zoning ordinance. Subject property has an address of 440 Central Street. It's located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district. As the lot presently exists, it consists of approximately 4,151 square feet of land with two existing structures located on the lot. So the structure to the north of the property is a two-family structure. That is the structure that is up against Central Street. The structure that's offset from Central Street to the south side of the property is a single-family home. The applicant would like to separate these lots so that they can eventually be sold as separate lots. The site plan, and I'll go through this in a minute, but the site plan identifies the lots as Lot A1 is the two-family, existing two-family that has an address of 440 Central Street, and the lot size that we are proposing for that property is 2,118 square feet of land. Lot B2 is the lot with the existing single-family home. That has an address of 444 Central Street, and we're proposing 2,033 square feet of land for that lot. In order to separate the lots, we need variances pursuant to 5.1 for both lots, for minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum side yard setback, minimum frontage, and minimum usable open space per dwelling unit. With regard to the single-family, we also need a setback for maximum front yard setback because it's set off of Central Street, and that's not necessarily characteristic of the neighborhood. We are also seeking relief pursuant to section 6.1 for both lots. So the existing two-family would require four off-street parking spaces because it's a two-family, two parking spaces per dwelling unit. We are not able to provide any parking for that lot. The single-family home would require two parking spaces for that one dwelling unit. We are proposing two parking spaces for that property, however, they're not dimensionally compliant. So we are proposing parking spaces that are eight by 16 in size, and the TMU district requires parking spaces of nine by 18. So we are not dimensionally compliant, we're requesting relief so the spaces can exist. So in addition to the relief that we're requesting, the other change to this property will be the fact that there's a connecting structure to the rear of the two-family and the front of the single-family that connects the, it's a sort of a hallway that connects the two properties. That would be demolished, and there would be stairs for egress for both buildings. The staff comments provide a thorough analysis of the requested relief. They conclude that there's no real substantial changes to the lot, and as a result, they have no issue with the request. The DPD comments are supportive of the application. They point out that there's no impact to density to the neighborhood and no derogation from the architectural character of the neighborhood either. DPD does ask us to clarify whether or not there's going to be parking for both lots. So in this case, there's not. We are, as I said, we're providing two parking spaces for the single-family home, but because of the lot lines, we are not able to provide any parking for that duplex. The, you know, as the lot currently situated, and if you've gone by the property, you have probably seen two cars parked side by side in the front. That's how they've been parking. One of those cars is for the two-family, and the single-family is actually vacant right now. But we're proposing two tandem parking spaces, so because they're tandem parking spaces, we are not able to give one of the, assign one of the spaces to the two-family because of the logistical inconveniences that would be associated with that. You can't have somebody living in the single-family and having them go move the, you know, or vice versa, it just doesn't work. So that, we cannot, we're proposing parking, dimensionally non-compliant parking for the single-family and no parking for the two-family. The other comments relate to, engineering comments relating to whether or not the utilities are separate. In this case, all utilities are separate except for the water line, and of course, if successful tonight, and prior to any sale of the property, my client would go about that process of separating the water line as well so that the properties can be sold You know, I guess in summarizing the application, although we seem to be requesting quite a bit of relief here tonight, these lots have been in existence since 1957 like this, you know, over 60 years. It was just recently, 2018, just prior to my client's purchase of the property, that the previous owner consolidated the lots, did a plan that consolidated the lots. So that's why we're here tonight asking for the relief that we're asking, but really, it's, you know, if those plans, if that lot was not consolidated, then we would have the right to an A&R subdivision of the lot and sell the lots separately. Again, the applicant's goal is to sell the property as two separate properties. Allowing for the re-subdivision of the property would make the property more saleable. It would more than likely result in the property's being owner-occupied, and that would benefit the neighborhood. So I'm just going to take a minute to review the plans here with you. So as I said, the two-family is to the north of the lot. It's the structure that is right up against Central Street. The single-family is offset, that's about 40, 41 feet from the lot line to the front of the house, and we show the two parking spaces, eight by 16, which, you know, fit the average-sized cars. Two cars can fit, tandem cars can fit there. The rear yard, this is grassed area, and it is, you know, although we don't meet the requirements for usable open space, we just miss it, but it is used by tenants. It's usable open space, there's benches out there, I don't know if you went behind this property, you would have seen that. This is a set of stairways, stairway going down from the driveway, the driveway portion of the lot going down to the backyard, there's a little drop-off there. And actually, these stairs are the stairs that, these are not the stairs that go down. These are the stairs that were proposed for the second floor, going from the second floor of the two-family down to the lower level. And these are the stairs that go down from the second floor to the first floor. So I think that's the site plan, you have a copy of this, obviously. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to answer any questions, address any concerns that the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor, for that summary of the project. Now we're going to open the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing then that portion of public hearings close. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? In favor? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to open question the comments to the board now. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council, thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate you, again, providing the copies of the deed. It makes total sense, providing the copies of the deeds, going back as well as the plan, the original plan from back in 1957, that clearly shows that these lots were intended, were separated and intended to be separated from that time. And I was just trying to figure out at what time they, at some point, they merged, and it looks like, like you said, it, going back on the, going on the Mass Land website, probably around 2018 or so, because it looks like the prior owner, from back in 1979, he held it for quite some time.
Right.
And ultimately, the, the lots ultimately merged into one. And I think...
There's not going to be no substantial changes?
There's no substantial changes being made, being made at all. There's no changes, really. It's just the, the lots are what they are, and they're just trying to get them back to where they were before, and I don't think that there should be, I don't see there'd be any issue in providing, providing relief on this. So I would be in approval of it, so.
Thank you.
I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am not really having many questions. I was just looking at the deeds myself, and it does say that there was two separates. It's just kind of strange that they would connect a house like that, though, you know? Like, there must have been a family that decided that they didn't want to walk around in the snow or something, you know? But...
I don't know what the rationale was for that, but, but I agree.
Yeah, it was confusing for a minute, but reading these, I can tell, so.
It was a previous owner, so.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think us as members, we're on the same page with this. I, it's, it's very obvious, you know, what the intention is, and I don't, I mean, the area it is, is what it is. It's very tight, very condensed, so the plan itself looks like it's making the best of what's available. So unfortunately, I know there is no shade trees available, but that's all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Prokop. Hold on, hold on, gentlemen. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to borrow from the staff comments. I'm going to use this as a cheat sheet because I think it summarizes everything up perfectly. While the relief requested is significant, the structures are already in existence, and the lots were previously not merged for zoning. So considering there's no proposed use change, our staff had no concerns with it, and I agree. I'll be supporting the petition.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Briere. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the applicant for maintaining the property so well. I just assumed that it was owner-occupied. It's so well-maintained. It's amazing. And you have green space. And you have green space. I assume that the subdivision means that the laundry lines will disappear maybe. I don't know, but they're wonderful to have. And you're in close proximity, as far as I see, to the Gallagher Terminal, walking distance, certainly commute distance, and three parking garages. So providing two parking spaces off-street, hopefully, the tenants will not need cars or reduce their car usage and will maybe even utilize the parking garages that are underutilized. A lot of relief thought, but as you said, it was subdivided recently, which is so strange.
Consolidated, right.
So strange, I'm sorry, consolidated recently, right? It's only six years or so. I would like to ask for street trees, as I always see green space in the back of these properties on the south side could support small fruit trees, small flowering trees, and would, would certainly contribute to lessening the heat island effect from the neighbor, not your site, but the neighbor's site, which has a lot of pavement. So I would like to condition that we provide, I'll work with DPD to provide two small shade trees, one in each lot. Since it is the south side anyway, it would be conducive to the use of the property as well, I think, in the, in the summer. But thank you so much for the way you maintain this property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Again, I think to my colleague's point, this, this project makes sense, the, the splitting, the subdivision, the consolidation. And, and to me, on paper, it looks like a lot of relief needed, but, but this project, it, it makes sense, and the lot is shaped that way, so really, on paper, it looks like a lot of, a lot of relief, but really, it, it makes sense with, with the lot layout and, and the way it's situated on, on the property. And again, thank you to the, to you for your investment in the city, and you know, I, I know this and other properties you have. I think it's a great investment. We hope you continue to invest in the city, and welcome. You just moved in, so we heard, so congrats. I'll be supporting as well. And then, councilor, we're memorable to the, the condition we talked about, the two shade trees?
We are.
Okay. Okay. All right, if there's no further comments from our colleagues, can we move forward with the motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-51 for variance at 118, for variance at 440 Central Street. The variance is for Lot A relief for minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback requirements, and any other relief required. Lot B requires variance approval for relief for minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback. And Lot A requires a variance for parking. Is that correct?
Lot A requires a variance, A1 for parking for dimensional non-compliance.
Okay.
And A2 for lack of off-street parking.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And with the condition that each lot be, provide a shade tree, and you work with DPD to provide that.
Could we just go over the variances for 5.1 again? Would you mind restating those?
So I'm reading what's listed on the document here in front of me, so.
Right.
I may not have that correct.
I think that, yeah, I think it, I don't think usable open space was on that.
No, it's not.
Right, so we do need that.
Okay. So Lot A is for minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback requirements.
And usable open space.
And usable open space and parking relief.
Correct.
And Lot B is for minimum lot area, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, minimum frontage, minimum front yards, maximum front yard setback, minimum side yard setback.
Usable open space.
Usable open space and parking relief.
Yep.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Motion by Mr. McCarthy.
Second.
Second, Mr. Prokop. Camera roll call, please.
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Mc, Member Briere, I mean, sorry, Member Callahan. I was trying to take the conditions down.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve with conditions.
Member Briere. Member Prokop.
Approve with conditions.
And Member Nickerson.
Approve the conditions.
You've been approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you, folks, for coming out. Have a good evening. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Under new business, we have ZBA-2024-57. Petition is a variance. The applicant is Quok Thai. Property located at 63 to 65 St. James Street. The applicant has applied to the lowest zone of appeals to create an additional paving on the right side of the building at 63 to 65 St. James Street. The subject property is located in additional two-family TTF zoning district. The project requires variance approval per section 5.1 for relief from the minimum usable open space per dwelling unit requirements and for any other relief required in the low zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, and member of the boards. My name is Cat Thai from 12 Casey Lane West in Massachusetts. I have my brother here, who is a partner of the LLC, and my wife present here. So basically, we're here to start a relief to repave the existing driveway area, which has been suffered from fire damage without relief, without a requirement of the open space. The proposed driveway that we seek to approve, approval for is located on the side of the building on the St. James Street, and this would not negatively affect the neighborhood properties as is, has been there before. And majority of the neighbor buildings have no open space, could not satisfy the open space as well. The, we purchased the property in 2015, and the drive, the driveway had, was already there. Unfortunately, we found out just now after we seek the permit to repave that it, the, the previous owner had never applied for the permit, and that's the reason why we need to appear here to have the variance for that. So there's a number of reasons we think this make more sense. Basically, it would relieve the demands for on-street parking in the area. There are a number of apartment complexes there, which require a lot of parking space on the street. So by having this driveway, we would relieve that demand. The driveway exists before. We have some pictures to show that as well. And there also existing curb cut, which is 14.7 feet already, which implicated, indicated that the driveway has been there for, for some time. And the majority in the neighborhood, like I mentioned, also have no, could not satisfy the open space as well, so it's not be deviate from the existing neighborhood appeals. And there are no objection from any of the city departments in, in having this, this driveway repaved. And so far, as far as we know, we spoke to most neighbors, and nobody have, give us any objections.
Okay. Thank, thank you, sir, for your summary of your project.
Thank you.
We're, we're going to move the hearing to the public now. Anyone who wants to speak in opposition to this project? In opposition? In opposition? All right, seeing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of the petition? In favor? In favor? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. We're going to open question the comments to the board now. The chair recognizes Mr. Nickerson. Mr. Nickerson, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the driveway is pre-existing, it's just that it's, you're looking to replace it with new asphalt?
Yes. So the driveway, I have a picture here of the existing that I can share. Basically, the driveway was there before we purchased the property in 2015, and it has been deteriorated significantly, so, but, but it is still usable, so we didn't try to repave it before then. But 2022, two, one and a half year ago, the property suffered from a fire damage, so we had to completely rebuild the property from ground up. And during the demolitions and the constructions, a lot of heavy equipment moved back and forth, so complete, the asphalt was completely broken up, and the basic area cannot be usable anymore. So that's when, now, since all the construction had been completed and the building had been completely rebuilt, we sought to repave the driveway as the same exact dimension as existed before. That's when we realized that the permit has never been pulled by our, by previous owners, and therefore, that's the need for us to come before you to request for variance.
Okay. Thank you. I better understand. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nickerson. The chair recognizes Mr. Prokop. Mr. Prokop, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This definitely does make perfect sense. I do have a question. Did you see the comments from the Department of Planning and Development where they referenced about finding ways to combat the urban heat islands?
Yes, I did.
And consider using UV reflecting coating on the paving? Is this something that you would consider?
Yes, we would entertain any suggestions that comment. I, to be honest, I don't really, I don't have an idea what that involves, but if that's something that you suggested, we can try to, to...
Yeah, I'm sure you can contact the Department of Planning and Development. And they also mentioned, you know, about the properties eligible for free shade trees, which is something you would want to...
Yes.
You know, doing that well. Again, you can contact the department for that. I think if we put these as conditions, it's something that we can approve. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Prokop. The chair recognizes Mr. Briere. Mr. Briere, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Briere. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question about the fire damage. So you had a significant fire event a few years ago, is that right?
Yes, yes, about last year, year, year and a half ago.
I'm, I'm sorry about that. But my goodness, what an improvement the property has made.
Oh, thank you.
It looks so much better today. It's, it looks outstanding. Nice, nice rebuild, and you maintained the same footprint.
Yes, we did, yeah.
I think that having a reasonable parking area makes a lot of sense, especially where you, you didn't really have a reasonable parking area in the past. But the green space is still an issue. I see that you could fit at least one reasonable shade tree and have that additional parking space back there. And I think that having that reasonable shade tree would basically do what the coating would do. So the coating is a, a surface-applied material that would need to be maintained.
Okay.
But having the shade tree, you just have to have the shade tree. The coating basically is not applicable anymore, so.
Okay.
If I could suggest to my fellow board member, George, if we could have the condition that the applicant provide one shade tree at the parking area, and specifically to alleviate that heat island effect, that would be my, my preference.
Yes, thank you. We can totally accommodate that, yes. The property does have enough land area that we can totally plant a tree there.
I, I would like to punish the applicant to provide one at St. James and Crowley Street, but there's not enough room. My goodness, the house would probably suffer from...
Right.
...damage if we pushed one there, so I think just the single shade tree in the parking area would be reasonable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes the vice chairman, Ms. Callahan. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yep, this makes sense, and I agree that we can try to get a shade tree in there somewhere. Work with DPD, preferably if you can get them both in there, one on St. James. I understand there's not a lot of space there, but it would be beneficial if we can get them both. If not, or if it works out, you try to get it in where the parking area is, and you don't think it's going to fit, we really probably should try to fit one in on that corner there as well. But you can work with DPD on that and see, see if we can get that in there. I believe that the comments did note that it's, the property is eligible for the Green and Gateway Cities Program, so, I mean, you get the free trees anyways, so.
Yeah.
Which is, be beneficial for the...
Thank you.
Beneficial for you and, and the neighborhood, so. I, I would be in approval of this, so, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Callahan. Mr. Thai, I, I think your project makes sense. I think you're trying to rectify, you know, the issue and make it more safer, the driveway. It makes total sense. And again, I'm sorry for the fire, but at least, you know, you got a, a nice, brand-new home now out of it, out of the unfortunate tragedy. But yeah, I, I'll support this. And then, you're in agreeance with the condition that we talked about, about the shade tree and adding that, working with DPD, maybe in the parking area of the new driveway, just so it helps mitigate like the heat, the heat effect?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy, did you have any other comments, sir? Okay. If there's no further comments, can I have a motion, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2024-51, I'm sorry, dash 57, property at 6365 St. James Street, for variance for minimal, minimum usable open space per dwelling unit, with the condition that the applicant work with DPD, provide a shade tree at the parking area and a potential of a second shade tree at the corner of St. James and Crowley.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second one by Mr. Briere. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve the conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
Member Briere. Member Prokop.
Approval with conditions.
Member Nickerson.
Approval with conditions.
All right. You've been approved, sir. Wish you the best of luck. Thank you for coming out tonight, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and have a good night. Thank you. All right, moving on into other business. Moving on into other business, we have minutes for approval for October 28th, 2024. Are there any updates, provisions, comments to the minutes by my colleagues? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?